Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to open our budget workshop for the 2012-2013 fiscal year, which is the, well, it's not really the first step, but it's the first step with council in developing our budget. There's been a lot of work that's already been done by staff over the last six months or so, and in a few minutes Rebecca and Ray are going to walk us through our recent budget history and revenue projections for the year ahead. And what their presentation will show is that Orlando remains in the best financial shape of any major city in the state of Florida, and we have made some difficult decisions to, about spending during these difficult times. And those choices have allowed us to maintain our public safety at the highest level that we have had it. And because of the hard work, we will not face a budget deficit this year. We'll be able to craft a balanced budget with no additional reductions in services or programs, and most importantly, we won't need to increase our tax rate this year. So that's Cliff Notes version, or my version. I'm going to leave the major points to Rebecca and Ray. So Rebecca, you want to come on up?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm pleased to be able to bring to you a balanced budget this year, and one which helps us to continue the good service level that we provide to the citizens of our city. This is the product of work that began, actually, last year toward the end of the year by a group of hard-working city employees, our budget team, as well as budget people in each of our departments who work very hard to provide a budget that meets the targets that we set out, and that is affordable, given the revenues that we expect to get here at the city. I'd like to recognize the budget team that we have here in the room today, so if they will all stand. As you can see, we're a pretty lean in staff here, so I think we're missing one. I think that, you know, I agree with the mayor wholeheartedly, that, you know, we have worked very hard. This council has made great decisions. We have benefited from the leadership of our mayor to travel through this almost unprecedented economic downturn that we've experienced over the last four years, and have come through that in very good financial condition. I do want to point out, however, that as we move forward, we are going to continue to have many challenges because of the revenue constriction that our new laws dealing with property tax have placed upon our ability to move forward. And we're going to give you some of that information today, and certainly will be available as we are at any time to discuss any issue or any concern that you may have with regard to the financial condition of the city. So with that, I'll turn it over to the brains behind the operation here, Mr. Ray Elwell, our Deputy Chief Financial Officer.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Two things we'd like to accomplish today. First is to kind of take a look back at how we ended the last fiscal year. I understand that the CAFRA was on your agenda probably in April. We'll do a quick highlight of that, some of the key things to take from that document, and then go through where we are currently in the budget process for the ensuing fiscal year. So starting out, looking at our audit for fiscal year 2011, we did get a clean audit opinion from our outside auditors, Ernst &amp; Young. And we talked a little bit about this last year during one of the workshops in our management letter, and that's an opportunity for our external auditor to communicate with management of the city, particularly the city council members and senior staff, about things that they find during the audit process, and significant internal control weaknesses that they find, or system enhancements they may recommend. For the second year in a row, there were no findings in our management letter, which is really a positive statement on the internal controls that we have built in to the city, also a reflection of the work of our staff, particularly in our financial reporting section, on how they're maintaining and maintaining control over the assets of the city. So that is definitely a positive for the city going forward. Looking at our budget to actuals, for our budget for fiscal year 2011, we had anticipated and built our budget on a draw of $20.5 million. The good news is our actual results came in, that draw was not necessary. So those reserves are available in fund balance, and as we go through the presentation further along to it this morning, we'll show how we'll roll those into the fiscal year '13 budget to be able to fund that budget. And just to recap, if you look at the numbers at the bottom, it gives us a little of a history of where we stood on our reserve calculations. And you can see, starting in 2008, we were about 28 percent of our budget was in reserve. And the good news, rolling into fiscal year 2012, we're at 35 and a half percent reserves in the bank for the city. Over that same period, we've added $30 million of reserves into the city's coffers. So certainly buttressing the statement the mayor made about being in good financial position. Very rare that a government today can stand up and say, "Over the last five years, we've actually added to our reserves," as opposed to drawing down reserves to maintain their operating budget. Other items of note, and I know you're all fans of the Gadsby Statement, so it wouldn't be a presentation, a financial presentation without bringing up Gadsby. There was a new statement that we implemented in fiscal year 2011, Gadsby Statement 54, dealing with fund balance. So if you line up your CAFRA's from last year with the CAFRA's from the prior year, you'll see that it's a little bit different in our terminology we use in classifying fund balance. We also have some different classifications of funds as a result of the Gadsby Statement. The fund balance is not significant of a change. We've always reported our fund balance in total, so the breakup between the different categories isn't going to be that much different. But there is kind of a different approach going forward dealing with the hurricane fund. We've always classified our hurricane fund as a special revenue fund. Obviously, we haven't had any expenses, and the revenue's just been interested in on the money in that fund. But going forward, because it's not technically a special revenue fund, that is additional revenue coming in from an outside source, it's really part of the general fund. So this point going forward, the hurricane fund, we're not going to have as a separate fund that we'll talk about, that's just part of our general fund reserves. And we've always considered it to be such, but going forward, you won't see that additional column in our financial statements. Other items of note, again, we had positive results in our enterprise funds, wastewater fund, parking system, and solid waste, all ended the year with profits for the year. We also have a very strong reserve position in all of our internal services funds. And you can see those numbers there for risk management, health insurance, and fleet replacement. Again, something not a lot of governments can claim is to have those internal service reserves available to them to be able to handle those one-time things or blips in experience. And also very important to note that we contributed our actuarially required contribution to all three of our defined benefit pension plans, and also to our OPEB fund. The OPEB fund, again, is something the city established three years ago, and we have fully funded our commitments for our OPEB. Again, something else that a lot of governments aren't unable to say today. Now moving on to where we are and where we see our position to be in fiscal year 2013. Our budget as it currently stands is $347 million. Our projection for 2013 is $354.3 million, so about a $7 million increase in revenue year to year. We'll go through each of these revenue categories in a little bit more detail, but you can see the majority of that funding is coming from fund balance, and we will work through a calculation to show you that we do have those reserves available to us above our 25 percent reserve calculation to be able to fund fiscal year 2013 budget. To go in a little more detail, first talking about our ad valorem revenue. We built our projections based on a consistent mileage rate with last year of 5.65. We do have a slight decline in revenue of about $3,000. Basically, what that's saying is we're flat year to year. We do have the property appraiser's certified tax rule, and we had less than a 1 percent increase in value in the city. On the good news side, we did have $130 million roughly of new construction added to the tax rule, and we have a net decline in available tax base of $105 million because of the homestead and the non-homestead tax caps. A little bit more detail on that number, the 105, there's two things going on. Our residential homestead tax credit went down by about $60 million, and our non-homestead tax credit went up by $165 million, netting a net 105. That $165 million equates to roughly $1 million of taxable value that's not available to the city as a result of the 10 percent assessment cap growth. So if you remember, several years ago, we talked about one of the initiatives in the property tax reform effort was capping the growth of non-homestead residential property at 10 percent. That is, in fact, happening. We are experiencing growth in the commercial sectors and the non-homestead sectors that would necessitate that cap becoming in play. And this year, we had about $165 million worth of taxable base that's not going to be taxed this year because of that cap. And again, in November, there's a charter amendment that would lower that to 5 percent. So that would even have a more significant impact. And kind of coupling and piggybacking on Rebecca said, that's one of the constrictions we're going to see going forward, is that as our assessment caps are coming into play, that's taxable revenue that the city's not receiving that we had been receiving prior to the property tax reform.
Ray, if it had been 5 percent this year, do you know how much additional revenue that would have?
Probably would have been more, because you would have captured the properties that grew between 5 and 7 percent. So we don't have that calculation available today, but it would have been significantly more than $165 million.
Okay. I will point out on the positive side that, as with the mayors of Jacksonville and Tampa, and they are net on property taxes still down 3 or 4 percent. So having a small bit of growth is certainly a good thing.
Yes. All right. This is an annual chart that we bring before you, and this is the result of the property tax reform initiative, letting you know what your tax rates are and what's legally required of the city to do, or to raise its mileage rate. Our current rate's 5.65. If we were to assess a mileage rate that would generate the same amount of revenue year to year on existing property, we would actually have to roll forward our rate, even though it says roll back, to 5.67. Our adjusted rollback, we have to go through this calculation in our reporting to the state. And basically, what our adjusted rollback says is if we went back and we captured the revenue that was available to us last year through the rollback rate, and then applied it again this year, we would have to assess a rate of 9.7 mils. So to capture the revenue that we didn't take advantage of last year by keeping our mileage rate the same, and doing the same this year, would necessitate a mileage rate of 9.7 mils. And then that gets us to the calculation where we can say that with a simple majority vote of the city council, you can assess a 10.136 mileage rate, which is not allowed. Our mileage cap is 10. And then a two-thirds majority vote, the mileage rate would be 11.1496. Ridiculous numbers, agreed. If we were to do the same chart for the DDB, we're looking at mileage rates of 400, just because of the way the process works. So from our standpoint, 5.65 looks pretty good. It's easy, we know the number's right. We look at sales tax revenue. We do have, our current revenue is tracking very close to our budget estimates. And looking forward, we're looking at about a 5 percent increase year to year. It was confirmed by the State Department of Revenue in their most recent estimates. Nice 5 percent increase, but we're talking about a $30 million base, so it's about $1,006 of additional revenue next year based on our sales tax projections. Municipal revenue sharing, again, about 3 percent increase. We are tracking really close to our budget estimates for the current year, and we do have our fiscal '13 budget estimates confirmed by the State Department of Revenue, so we're looking about $9.5 million of municipal revenue sharing projected for next year. Our franchise fee dividend, this is our OUC revenue. A little bit of history, from 2008 to 2011, we had an agreed fixed amount we received each year from OUC. Our total payment grew from $71 million to $76 million, and then we agreed in fiscal year 2012 to hold the number flat, so we are at $76.8 million. We are currently negotiating that number with OUC. Our current projections look like we'll have about a $400,000 decline in revenue, primarily driven by the decline in rates that OUC is charging. So if their revenue's down, the franchise fee equivalent we receive will be down. So we're looking at about a $400,000 decline in fiscal year 2013, which is about a half a percent. Our local business tax is no change in rates for fiscal year 2013, and we're projected to be equal in activity 2013 from 2012. Our other revenue category, and this is everything else the city charges in the general fund, including administrative reimbursements, fines, fees, forfeitures, and other miscellaneous income. Just a note, as noted on the slide, in 2011, we brought in $20 million of fund balance from the UST fund, transferred that over to the general fund. That was more of an accounting entry than anything else, and that's why the 2011 number is so much higher compared to '12 and '13. We are projecting a decline in 2013 for two primary reasons. The first reason is we do do an administrative calculation, administrative reimbursement in the general fund for all of our enterprise funds, water, wastewater, solid waste, parking, they pay into the general fund for my services, for your services, and then all the services that the general fund provides to them. That's a calculation, we have a consultant who prepares an indirect cost allocation plan, and based on that calculation, the reimbursement for 2013 is about $2 million less than it was in 2012. We look at that not necessarily as a one-time thing, that's really over span of time because of the way it works. So some years will be up, some years will be down, but over time, we will get the accurate administrative reimbursement from those funds. Then we also have a discontinuation of the business tax pledge to the parking fund. There was a pledge of the local business tax for parking debt that has expired. Basically, it was $1 million expense and $1 million revenue to the general fund. We would move it to the parking fund. Once the debt obligations were made, it would come back as a revenue to the general fund. Again, more of an accounting entry than a real fiscal impact entry, but it's reflected in the budget this year that that payment will not be made. Then finally, our calculation of reserves that are available for appropriation next year. This is where you get to see Gadsby 54 rearing its head, and when we talk about the general fund's fund balance, categories are unassigned and assigned, that we take into consideration for calculating our reserve calculation. So you see, we have about $114 million of general fund reserves available as of September 30th last year. We also have $8 million in the UST fund, and also there's $1.6 million in the EMS transport fund. That was a special revenue fund up until the fiscal year 2013 budget. That'll get rolled into the general fund as a regular city operation, so we're able to bring those reserves into our calculation. So you can see, as of today, we have $125 million of reserves sitting in the bank available to us. In fiscal year 2012, we built the budget on using $20.5 million of reserves to balance the budget. At this point, we're projecting to use only about $6.8 million of the $20.5 million, so the difference will be available in our calculation of reserves for fiscal year 2013. So on a fiscal year 2013 proposed budget of $354 million, our 25 percent reserved requirement, it would be $88.5 million. So we have $29.5 million of reserves above our 25 percent above what we anticipate using in 2012 that we can use to fund our 2013 budget. Now moving over to the expense side, as Rebecca mentioned, we have a continuation of service budget that we have been working on since December. Departments were issued a budget guidance development letter that basically said, "What you're doing today is what we anticipate you're going to be doing on October 1st. Tell us what it's going to cost to do that within your current existing budget." So we have included in our proposed budget, as it stands right now, are the negotiated pay increases for all of our bargaining units and our management employees. Those are included in the budget. There are no new positions at the present time in the budget for next year, both general fund and all of our enterprise and operating funds, there are no new positions. The only changes that we were permitted to supplies, materials, contractual services were a result of direct price increasing. So if the department can document that they are going to be impacted by a price increase, those were allowed in the budget, otherwise, everything was kept constant. We're particularly proud of the next one. We have budgeted our actuarially required contributions, again, for all of our defined benefit plans and for our OPEB. The next one is more of an internal accounting. Right now, we have our fleet operations, our risk management, our healthcare, all internal service funds. And as part of the '13 budget, what we're going to do is move our facility management function to an internal service fund. What that does is actually gives us a better idea of what it's costing us to operate our departments by moving it to an internal service fund. So to the extent that facilities is doing anything for the police department, fire department, going forward, that's going to be reflected as a cost of the police and fire department as opposed to a general facilities budget. And what we're going to be doing over the next couple of years is doing this with several of our internal operations, so that we can get to a full costing of those operations. One of the things that we find when we're talking the budget, they say, "Well, just cut to city government." Well, we can only cut so far because we're doing so much for those other operating departments. If we cut facilities, it's going to impact police and fire. So we need to have a better way of communicating that, and by moving these organizations into internal service funds, it gets us to a full costing, better picture of whether those operations are actually costing the city. There is one new item across the entire $2 billion budget, and that is, we do have budgeted debt service for an internal service loan, internal, let me start again, we do have debt service for an internal loan related to the Lake Eola property. We did make a $3 million down payment on the property, it was purchased by the Land for Public Trust, and we do have money in the budget to service a loan from our internal loan fund to the additional $5 million, roughly $5 million to acquire that property outright. So that would be, come into the city's asset as part of the Lake Eola park. So we run all those items in through our model and build it into our budget for next year. We are looking at, again, a $354 million expenditure budget. You can see where those numbers fall out throughout our departments. The big number on business and financial services is that move of facilities to an internal service fund, so that's why the big negative number is there. Just, you know, some gee whiz facts and figures on the 2013 proposed budget. We are going, you know, we're crossing the $200 million mark for police and fire as our general fund. That roughly equates to about 57 percent of our operating budget for our general fund is police and fire. We did a more detailed calculation last year, and I can say the same is absolutely true this year. If you add up all the taxes that the city levies, ad valorem taxes, sales tax, municipal revenue sharing, CST, business tax, it doesn't total $200 million. So we are spending more on police and fire than we generate in tax revenue. The other gee whiz numbers, we have about $100 million in ad valorem revenue, and we're spending $200 million on police and fire services. So they're very impressive numbers to communicate the message that police and fire are obviously the number-one priority of the city. So summarize where we stand currently today. We are balanced. We have revenue that's equal to our estimated expenditures in order to maintain our services for another year. And our other funds, they all are in balance. As I mentioned earlier, there are no new positions being proposed for any of our operating funds. We do have built into our budget the automatic rate increases that would apply to solid waste rates and to wastewater rates. So where do we go from here? On the next city council meeting, the workshop, the mayor will present his budget address, and then we have to adopt a proposed mileage rate so that the trim notices can go out. And that will be on your consent agenda for the next city council meeting on July 30th. Then we have two public hearings scheduled for September, and those dates are September 10th. We'll have a proposed, a public hearing on the proposed budget, and then on September 17th, we'll have a public hearing, and then we'll take the official vote to adopt the budget and also adopt the mileage rate for the year.
Okay. Thank you, Ray. Questions, comments? Commissioner Delano?
Yes, just a couple regarding, on page 18, the pay increases. So everybody's going to get a pay increase this year?
If you recall, Commissioner, we did have negotiated agreements for the last three fiscal years. Our unions agreed to forego pay increases for two years, and then with a 3 percent increase-
So it's hitting this year?
So the 3 percent increase will hit fiscal year '13.
Does that include, I mean, city employees across the board? Does everybody belong to a union?
No. About 4 percent of our employees, I think somewhere in that range, do not, but it does anticipate that all employees will be treated similarly.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure everybody was included.
Non-bargaining unit employees will receive the same 3 percent raise.
Yes.
Okay, great. And the other is regarding the $3 million debt on Eola, that's really actually $5 million?
Correct. I apologize, Commissioner, that may have been confusing. When the initial property was acquired, the city put $3 million into the purchase. The total price is about 8.5, so we still have a balance outstanding, so the loan amount will be about $5.5 million.
Okay.
And then we have $300,000 in the budget for debt service to service that debt.
Okay. So how long is it going to take us to deal with that? It's like everybody else's mortgage?
Probably shorter.
Probably about 30 years.
30? You say 30 years? Did you say 30 years? It's like a regular house mortgage.
No, I think it's shorter than 30 years.
Gosh, I was just thinking of the interest that goes toward that.
We'll get you that exact information.
Oh, no, no, that's not necessary with interest rates on that many millions of dollars would blow me away. How do we fund that gap between the lack of taxes to cover that normally municipalities were established for, your taxes would pay for your security piece, the fire and police? And how are we doing that? I know through general funds or whatever, but it is, I mean, it's a great amount, but how do we do that? Is that a part of patting ourselves on the shoulder to exceed the tax revenues that would normally go to in terms of services and the costs of fire and police? You say on pay-
I'll take that answer.
No, I'm just saying, do we pat ourselves on the shoulder to say, "Oh, we've got 57 percent of our budget," and it is, there is a gap between the taxes that would normally go to pay for it and the actual service provided to citizens, our residents?
Right. Couple answers to your question. First answer is obviously, police and fire are our number-one priority. So what that's costing in maintaining that service is really built into our base budget, and then we build on from there. I gave you those numbers just to kind of point out the fact, because one of the things we always hear about is lower taxes. Well, the problem is, our taxes aren't even covering our police and fire service. The different revenues that come in from other sources, we do have the OUC revenue coming in, you know, the dividend from OUC, so we have other sources to the balance. The concern is not the budget is balanced. The issue is, when you try and line up what you're being taxed for versus the service you're receiving for a citizen in the city of Orlando, they're being taxed at a rate less than what their public safety services are being provided to them.
Right. Well, I'm not one of those people talking about lowering taxes, except for this economy, it just makes sense to do what we've been doing, and that's maintaining our mileage rate where it is. But even as we maintain it, it literally increases to keep up. I mean, it's still more money for us.
It's a difficult formula to work. When the line above is going flat or down, and the line below, your expenses are going up. And it's a matter of prioritizing services, which we have done over the last several years, and maintaining the revenue sources that we have. But, you know, going forward, it's not something that's going to be solving itself this year. It didn't solve itself last year. It's going to be an ongoing struggle as we go forward in building budgets into the next couple of fiscal years.
But there has been some reduction in some of the services we provide, not necessarily fire and police. You can't reduce that. Well, you shouldn't anyway, but other services, what are some of the cutbacks we've had to make through the last three years?
We've done a significant reduction in outsourcing, or, excuse me, we've done a significant reduction in our maintenance programs. Our capital contribution, our CIP contribution each year was cut in half three years ago. We have not been able to restore that. We're also funding our vehicle replacement at half of what it had been prior to-
That's right. I'm really in a bad car. Okay, gotcha.
But that being said, you know, we have to point out, even though we did make that reduction, we still are in good stead with our fleet. You know, we've been able to manage that, and we still have reserves available in the event something should happen. So you're correct, managing through this has been difficult, but we've put ourselves in a better position than a lot of other governments.
Right. And you know, Mayor, I'm going to ask, and I left a message, I think, with Byron, I really want us to talk, and maybe Rebecca, regarding how we can do some things with the new transportation bill that passed with links that will help our residents, and our employees especially. So I think I left, Byron got that message, if we can look into some possibilities that could be a great help to our employees or, to some degree, those that write links anyway.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay. Commissioner Stewart?
Ray, I've got a couple of questions. Thank you, first of all, for your work, and Rebecca, thank you for putting together a great team. When you went through Slide 10, there were some figures on there that you mentioned that really weren't posted there, so I'm just trying to make sure. It goes back to the $165 million, is that correct?
That's correct.
Of what was not above the cap, the 10 percent cap. That $165 million of commercial revenue, basically on the cap, that was not taxable because it was above the 10 percent cap. But you used it on this particular slide on 10. Now, I was trying to figure out that connection, or was it just something that you said at the same time?
It really goes to, and I apologize for the confusion on the slide, if you look at the last bullet point where we talk about the increase in residential, non-residential property differential was $105 million, that's really a net number, because the non-hom- Because the non-homestead property grew by 160, and the homesteaded property went down by, went up by 165. The homesteaded property went down by 60. So there's a net increase of $100 million, but broken up to two points. One going up 165, the other one going down by 60.
Okay, so that net amount is the 105.
Yes.
All right, okay. Next question, real quickly. On slide number 17. The unassigned and assigned are the new figures from Gatsby, I think, is what you were trying to tell us. Is that correct?
Correct.
$85 million. We appear, we're basically at $115 million.
In the general fund.
Is that correct in terms of, in terms of the general fund? And so therefore, we would effectively reduce that from 115 to 88.5. That's where that difference comes from? Or is the 29.5, is it assigned to the general fund? Or is it assigned to a portion of the general fund?
It is assigned to the general fund. And those are revenues to the general fund that may have a tie to it. Those may be code enforcement fees that are part of the general fund. We can use those for any type, but it's really reserves that are available to the city. So that's the difference between the unassigned and the assigned. The assigned have some type of tie to it. The unassigned, it's just city money that's sitting in the bank, available for any particular purpose. So the answer to your question is yes. That if we were to look at where we would go for next year, our target is $88.5 million, which is a 25% of the general fund expenditures for the ensuing fiscal year.
And taking your projection from the previous year, the previous year's target was 20.5, but we only had to dip in 6.8 of that.
Our budget for 2012 is built on the use of $20.5 million. We're anticipating, based on our current projection, only using 6.8. So the balance will be available. And again, that 20.5, when we did that calculation, was above and beyond our 25% target. So that money is now available to be re-appropriated in 2013.
Okay, so I guess I'm asking it a backwards way. So 29.5 million that's available, really, half of that money has been funded out of the current year of us not having to use it.
Correct. Yes.
So we really don't, we're not, we're not, we're not running over 29 million every year. We just happen to-
I would love to be able to say, yes, but no, we're not.
We have a short moment of enjoyment of having cumulative surplus. And so the idea was that sometime that's going to catch up on us.
Yes.
Go back to your figures about the ad valorem tax and police and fire. This is one of the challenges I have when I get a chance to speak out in public with some of our- And I share often that if we were just to tax police and fire only as the ad valorem tax, we'd actually have to move up our ad valorem tax about 50% just to cover the cost of police and fire, which is, all of us would agree, is our primary responsibility as a city.
Well, it's even worse than that. You couldn't do it. If you were just to assess an ad valorem rate to cover police and fire, you couldn't do it because roughly today, 1 mil is equal to $17 million of revenue. So if you went to your maximum cap of 10 mils, you would generate $170 million. And we have a budget for police and fire of over $200 million.
What we're bringing in ad valorem today, I guess, is what I'm looking at. Back on, is that 10?
Yes, sir.
So your projection is, in ad valorem, it's, this is just the millage rate itself applied against commercial and residential property, is $98 million?
Yes.
And it seems to me, five or six years ago, it's like $132, $133 million. Is that right?
We hit a high of about $135 million.
Okay, okay. And then go back to your projected expense caps. The over recap comes to roughly $187 million. That's correct? That what you said at the end on the expense side?
Expense side for?
On page 20. No, it's more than that. It's 83 and 118.
Right, 201.
Okay. Because I think what I want our citizens to understand is that we do a very good job using a variety of resources to accomplish the task that we accomplish. If you go, one choice in the long term is go to fee for service. If you go to fee for service, which is an option always available, I guess, to us now, but it's the legislature. If you go to fee for service, it would drive up our taxes as our fees significantly higher than what people are currently paying in ad valorem taxes.
Yes.
So we're doing a good job balancing those two to make sure making ends meet. There wasn't anything in here on the CRA. Are you going to begin presenting that later time? In terms of CRA revenues and- Okay, with the general budget? Okay, good. Again, thank you for what you do, and thank you for the way you guys accomplished this. Because I think our citizens don't tend to understand unless they want to get involved in the minutia. What they see is, they see a tax bill. I mean, I can tell you, this past weekend, somebody griped about his tax bill. He was paying way too much money to the city of Orlando. When I looked up his account, he paid $375 a year for police and fire only. If we just took that, he's paying less than 30 bucks a month, we found out, for police and fire, and didn't include anything else that he was paying for. It was just fascinating that he thought that was just exorbitant.
And I appreciate that comment, Commissioner. And Rebecca has made a very good line at one of our meetings. She said, "More people pay $30 or so for their electronic monitoring of their home" than they do in paying ad valorem taxes.
Yeah, you pay 39 bucks to go call the police, but, and you pay 30 bucks for the police to show up. I mean, which is more important? Somewhere along the line, you gotta pay for the police to actually show up. Thank you very much. I appreciate your work and the work that all of our staff has done to keep us kind of on point, on cue. Thank you.
Commissioner Ains?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Ray and Rebecca, for your presentation. But on slide number 20, you mentioned under business and financial services. I think you said there was an office that moved?
Yes. The facilities office, facilities management, is moving to an internal service fund.
Okay.
So that's going to be funded by the operating departments into a separate fund as opposed to just an expense of business and financial services. It's an accounting difference, but it gives us a better picture of what is actually going on in the city.
Okay. And then the other part was the other revenue on page nine. Is the red light camera included in that category as well?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And that's all I had, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? All right, Ray, Rebecca, whole finance team, thank you. Good presentation, and we're in a better position than a lot of other cities, that's for sure. Okay, thank you. That'll conclude our workshop for today. And we will move right into our agenda review. And let's see who's up today. Commissioner Ortiz. So let's skip Commissioner Ortiz and begin with Commissioner Stewart.